I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic of America.
Thank you, Mayor. The Order for Commissioners' Public Meeting Tuesday, January 18, 2022. The time is announced at six eleven. Pursuant to their requirements for the Open World and Meeting Act, Judge of two thirty of law and public law nineteen seventy five, notice that this meeting was published in December nine, twenty twenty one, issued with the New York Sun, like our New York Sun's Star Ledger. The time change was set in May, but applies with the New York Sun issue of Thursday, January thirteen, twenty twenty two. A copy of this may has been posted in the Nuthley Town Hall bulletin board, and the copy is on file at the New York Sun's Board's office. Commissioner Kelly.
President.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Patraco.
Here.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Here.
Mayor Tucci.
Here.
All persons mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I see we have minutes for December seventh and December twenty first, twenty twenty one. I do not wish to confer. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you.
Commissioner Patraco. Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. We also have executive session minutes for January fourth, November twenty twenty two. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Can you carry his car as well, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The Nuthley Irish County Alliance has submitted an event application for the forty-third St. Patrick's Day Parade to be held on Saturday, March fifth, twenty twenty two, from twelve P M. to three P M. on Franklin Avenue to Harrison Street and ending at Chestnut Street. And the Nuthley Elks Lodge has submitted an application for a social affair department for St. Patrick's Day Parade celebration on Saturday, March fifth, twenty twenty two, from ten A. M. to, that should be ten P. M., at two forty-two Chestnut Street. I need a motion, please.
Please. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Good.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
And that's it for communications.
Reports. Commissioner Patraco.
Yes, Mayor, I have my public page report. Lee Sparker, this is a quarter for emergency rescue services. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a code enforcement report for the fourth quarter of twenty one, December two thousand twenty one, January four, two thousand twenty one.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott Pelley.
There are various reports of months of, of November, December, fourteen.
Thank you very much. Uh, bills?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Public affairs, one hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and two cents. Revenue and finance, four million, two hundred and twelve dollars, I'm sorry, two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-four cents. Public safety, zero. Public works, twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Parking public property, nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Water utility, five thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty cents. Payroll as of January seventh, twenty twenty-two, regular payroll total, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and ten cents. Overtime payroll total, seventy-seven thousand, eighty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. Total payroll, nine hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-three cents, for a grand total of six million, two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Move the bill. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Thank you. Now let's take a public comment on agenda items only, please.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding a community concern should state your name and address for the record. Further time is granted by the Board. Each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed with the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no one who wishes to comment at this time. I will now have the team board commission announcements. Commissioner Scott Pelley, anything to say?
I have another one, yes, thank you.
Commissioner Patrako?
Yes, Mayor, we can have a moment of silence for, for my last police officer who passed away last week. Um, Alan Vicki, um, serves, I think it was thirty years here, um, way back, of course. But Alan was, uh, out of cancer, really, uh, you know, Alan Vicki, a strong man, strong fighter, family died. He will be missed by the police officers and everybody who were attached to him.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Evans, anything to say?
Nothing to say, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
Nothing, nothing at all, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Phil. We will move into ordinance introductions. Uh, I have no ordinance to be introduced this evening on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. This is an order to the Board of Commissioners to attach development and county investments, adopting the Frank and redevelopment plan. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the New York Sun, together with the notice required by law. In that further consideration, we set an ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners, be held at its second reading on February fifteenth, October?
Yes, Mayor.
February fifteenth, I move the ordinance. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. This evening, we have one ordinance, uh, on second reading. This is Commissioner Scott Pelley's ordinance. Commissioner?
Yes, Mayor, ordinance number three, four, eight, four, orders providing the Chestnut Street railway project, attached to county investments in Jersey, appropriated four hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Therefore, for advisory, speaking, Jersey Park transportation, across the town.
Right, I will now open up the public hearing for comments. We have no comments. Who moves the public hearing? Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Move the ordinance. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Rules and Resolutions. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. The first one I have on this evening is, we have the entire Board of Commissioners, uh, number one eight twenty-two. Whereas the late Reverend Dr. Martin, Dr. Martin for King Junior, was a leader of great courage, and still became known as a drug maker, and was still right, and franchised by his citizens. Whereas Dr. King's life of trafficking got short by assassin bullet in April nineteen sixty-eight, and is that Seawell who was there, championing the cause of the work of his workers. Whereas we see efforts of many dedicated people who leave Dr. King serves national recognition, the third national recognition, the third Monday in January, is national recognized. Does it dead to remember Dr. King's legacy, the cause for which he so gladly fought and died. Whereas Dr. King's life will always shine as the life of those without hope, as an example to be endeavored by all who care about their fellow people, regardless of race, religion, class, nationality. And therefore, here's a, the Board of Commissioners, the town of Nuthley County, as a state of New Jersey, recognized and celebrates Martin Luther King Junior Day. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Uh, the second one I have on this evening is, uh, resolution number twenty-three, twenty-two. Uh, the resolution to rescind, uh, resolution number three, twenty-eight, twenty-one, passed by the thirty-second point one. Or in the contract, the township, uh, for shared service, period for animal control, uh, the, uh, that, that, for, here's a, uh, Board of Commissioners township of Nuthley County, as a state of New Jersey. Uh, send that resolution for incorrect dates. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Pelley.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
And this is the corollary, corollary to that, uh, resolution number twenty-four, twenty-two. Where the state of New Jersey Uniform Shared Services Retaliation Act, very special, annotated forty-eight, five, one. Uh, authorize local unit to enter into agreement with another local unit where you supply or receive any service that each local unit just been, the previous power of size, provide or see, it's on jurisdiction. Where the township of Nuthley, township of Bluefield, that previously entered into a shared service period for animal control and have full-time investigative enforcement services assumed, uh, through the Jersey, dash, annotated twenty-six, three, eight, two. Although it was by on the seventh thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Whereas the township of Nuthley, it's ours, renewing a shared service period for the animal control services that have full-time investigative enforcement services set up. Plus of six thousand, three hundred, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars, twenty-five thousand, period, three years, beginning January first, twenty twenty-two, and then eight, seven, thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. With two percent annual adjustment for both twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, either one remaining, drop from its current estimate, fourth, very special, act, twenty-six, three, eight, two, dash, twelve. And whereas funds will be available for, from account, uh, two, dash, two. Year one, dash, one, three, four, dash, two, not had certified chief financial officer, subject to the adoption of twenty twenty-two municipal budget. Therefore, here's a, the township of Nuthley County, as a state of New Jersey, thus hereby authorized, man, township clerk, execute shared service period, the township, Bluefield, Animal Control, and full-time investigator for its service in January first, twenty twenty-two. Through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, at a monthly rate of six thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, twenty-five. And then, with the two percent increase for both twenty. A copy of this resolution, agree, so we can, um, use a quick copy of this resolution, so we can set the target, um, twenty-six, six, seven. So move.
Okay.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas, whereas, twenty-two, four, sixty-seven, permits the every buyer, which is a penalty, fixed rate of interest, be charged for unpaid taxes. Or sets, subject to any payment or discount, with the late payment of taxes, for my, my law. Whereas, whereas, fifty-four, colon, sixty-seven, has been, forbid fixing of said rate of eight percent per annum, the first fifteen hundred dollars of the maintenance fee. And eighteen percent per annum, on any amount in excess of this amount. Now, therefore, babies, all the Board of Commissioners, of the township of Nuthley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, as follows, the tax code, here's hereby authorized, direct. They charge eight percent per annum, on all taxes that come with the limit, after the date, subject to any payment or discount, with the late payment of taxes, combined by my law. Uh, in Nuthley, we will follow the minimum amount that, that the charter will not, will not comply with eighteen percent on the late payment. Effective January one, two, twenty twenty-two, according to tax records made by cash checker, anywhere shown, having any great period, anything that's not paid towards the section two of this resolution, shall be charged. Interest for the due date, is set according to section one of this resolution, so.
Second.
Commissioner Pelley.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
But don't be bashful, you guys could all could have jumped on that.
It was all yours, Chris.
Yeah. The minute, minute, resolution thirteen, twenty-two, uh, Robert Swire, uh, is entitled to five dollars, refunding the, uh, capital expenses. Now, therefore, you can resolve that, issues, uh, Nuthley County, uh, State of New Jersey, the county treasury, being chief several hours. We should refund it to the amount of five dollars, Robert Swire, and I think that this happened, I think, here, some.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Here's a, the Board of Commissioners, township of Nuthley, as a state of New Jersey. The treasury, being chief, here by quarter, our three, but fully paid of tax charges, one thousand dollars, four, fifty-two, uh, three, three, eight, hundred, thirty-nine. Thirty-three, four, nine, uh, and, block nine, block nine thousand, block thirty-seven, equal amounts of two hundred and fifty dollars, some of that.
Second.
Commissioner Pelley.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Well, my next two resolutions relate to the operations of the township, uh, establishing a temporary budget until the, uh, full budget, you're, initiated in the dollar. Whereas, four, eight, four, nineteen, local budget, all divides either any contracts, credits, or figures, or to a part of the final adoption, of some, of the budget, temporary progress, they, they, first. It provides, whereas, date this resolution is within thirty, uh, first thirty days of twenty twenty-two, where the total corporation, less appropriations to capital, moving debt service, involved assistance, are, are, current fund of three, millions, one hundred and sixty-seven, six, seven, two dollars, five cents. Or until they formulate four hundred and fifty dollars. Whereas, twenty-six, one hundred percent of total corporation. Like, of the total corporation, twenty-one, less appropriations to capital, moving debt service, and assistance, said, twenty-two, for budget, is as well, term from thirteen million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars, five cents. Or until, uh, one million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-five cents. Now, therefore, babies, on, on, commission, with township, Nuthley County, of Essex, New Jersey, as well, temporary, issues, parts to be made, through a certified copy of this resolution, transmitted to chief financial officer, for the accounts. Uh, fully adjusted, departments, the township listed in the resolution summary.
Second.
Commissioner Pelley.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Whereas, the review is established, as four, eight, four, nineteen, applies to the debt service, is to be made prior, be paid in twenty twenty-two, parties, in the final, part of the, of King, twenty-two. Whereas, separate corporations, should be made for the amount of debt service, in that, in time, where, whereas, the late discussion, which is subsequent to December twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one, whereas, the debt service will become different within the first six months of twenty twenty-two. Now, therefore, figures, all by, for the issues, the township, divided, the follow-up corporation, who made interest on bonds, one hundred and nineteen thousand, principal on bonds, one million, one hundred and eighty-five, about a couple. On anticipation, formally, till, and, try to, on anticipation, to make five thousand dollars. The, the, uh, here's the, 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 long, principal amount, nine million, two hundred dollars, monthly interest, thirty-five hundred dollars, for total, uh, debt service, two million, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Uh, the, uh, water utility, interest on bonds, three thousand dollars, principal on bonds, five, six, seven, eight, in, uh, the, the, our team, long, uh, principal amount, three six thousand dollars, trust, three six thousand, uh, voided, it's, uh, as well.
Second.
Commissioner Pelley.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Patrako, yes. Whereas the Nuthley Police Department, employees, Leo, two officers, the state of two officers, have told, please, power of duty. Whereas the Nuthley Police Department, as the point of Joseph, Michael, Joseph, William, Michael, Landbrugge, work with the state of two officers, and Oliver Hammond, Trainers, Bia, and Rand Buck, the four. As lead one officers for John Tiergreen, beginning January first, two thousand twenty-two, December thirty-first, took that. Now, therefore, here's a, by Board of Commissioners, township of Nuthley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, let the mayor and township clerk, that the Nuthley Police Department, the board president, the point, Joseph, Michael, Joseph, William. Let Landbrugge, work with the state of two officers, Oliver Hammond, Brad, and Rand Buck, as lead one officers for January first, and December thirty-first, took that, twenty-two, I move it. Second.
Commissioner Pelley.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Here's a, by Board of Commissioners, township of Nuthley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, that accordance with the provisions, whereas, four, eight, dash, sixty-nine, column, transfer version of two thousand twenty-one, appropriation research, be the same, or, or, hereby authorized, uh, from. And so, the eighty, twenty-one thousand, took officer, she managed from six thousand, destined, fifteen thousand, to two, twenty-one thousand, and the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Pelley.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Second.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Commissioner Scott Pelley?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a pool, uh, resolutions, twenty-five, twenty-two, and twenty-six, twenty-two? Your permission? Absolutely, thank you. Whereas the township of Nuthley has a need to retain, the only associates for professional services, to provide engineering services, called the, the hydraulic, the hydrology, studying to identify and dress. Townships were accessed in common areas, for trainers, for judges, attached, where, whereas this township is important without the patent, as a professional service, recorded with J S A number nineteen, home forty-four, eight, twenty-four, twenty-two, or twenty-five. Of the local public contracts law, goes to contractors for a service performed by a person authorized by law, to practice and recognize the profession, that's not, that's regulated by law. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners, determined that the only associates located in twenty-four, Farm Street, Suite three hundred, or New Jersey, is best suited to provide these services attached to Nuthley. And whereas, the only associates has a cleaning spin, a business entity, displaying certifications, certifying, they not made any reportable, disqualified contributions for legal, or, legal, animated committee, attached to Nuthley, the previous one year. And the contract prohibits making any reportable contributions from the title of contract. Whereas, the only services, in form of hydraulic, hydrologic study, and of course, as they exceed eighty-five thousand dollars. Whereas, ones are available from the capital, T fifteen, nine, seven, nine, oh, three, in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars, and certified with chief financial officer, set certification, being attached to this resolution. Whereas, the anticipated term of this contract, this will sell, twelve months from February first, twenty twenty-two, to January third, first, four, twenty-three. Now, therefore, we resolve, our Board of Commissioners, township of Nuthley County, as a state of New Jersey, that the mayor hereby authorized, to extend it to a contract, which the only associates has professional service, in amount not exceeding eighty-five thousand dollars. Therefore, we resolve, the copy of this resolution, as well as the contract, shall be placed on, on, or attached, in the notice of course, of the public contracts law in New Jersey. In the form attached, it shall be posted on the schedule of the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Uh, Joe, this is great. Thank you for moving this along. The study is so important. I didn't believe that many residents would be ready to do, we're doing this conference, and investigation, and the energy data results.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Go ahead. Thank you, Christian. Whereas rapid applications have been received from the following organizations, I can tell one organization, Frank, of the senior, uh, for license number one, dash, twenty-two, and license number two, dash, twenty-two. Uh, for a, an on-premise fifty-fifty cash rapid on Sunday, March third, twenty twenty-two, the on-premise fifty-fifty cash rapid for Saturday, April ninth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas applications have been reviewed, and approved by the municipal clerk, and police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, attached to Nuthley County, about extending the procedure. If the aforementioned licenses are approved, municipal clerk will authorize the issue of such licenses, I am in resolution. Second.
Commissioner Pelley.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Whereas the township of Nuthley has a need to acquire specialized professional services, as a fair note of contract, responsible provision of N J S A nineteen, home forty-four, eight, twenty-one, with five. And whereas, the request for qualifications to township forest, were received, in the open on Wednesday, December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Whereas, the most responsible and responsible request for qualifications is for the Shangri Department LLC, John Watson, P O, lot sixteen eighty-nine, West Orange, New Jersey. Whereas the Shangri Department LLC, John Watson, New Jersey, certified tree expert, number one ninety-eight, after vinyl services, is best, township of Nuthley, has particularly suited to provide continued service. And whereas, the term of this contract is for one year, we are recommencing on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, and continue to October twentieth, twenty-two. And whereas, the contract is not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars, and the funds are available from account, one, dash, zero, one, five, twelve, two hundred, in the amount of five thousand, five dollars, and. Two, dash, zero, one, five, twelve, two hundred, in the amount of sixteen thousand, four ninety-five, funds have been certified by chief financial officer, since certification, being attached to this resolution. Now, therefore, we resolve, that Board of Commissioners, the township, the county, must extend in New Jersey, but a contract, be awarded to the Shangri Department LLC, John Watson, as described here. Response to the request for qualification, be placed on the file of the terms of resolution, and a notice of this action shall be printed once, and will not be sold, or entered, local contract. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Thanks.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Whereas still to receive, treat a new service on December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, in the township of Nuthley. And whereas, Tucci's tree experts, two fifty-four, not to, or, Brooklyn Park, New Jersey, with the low bidder, for all four items, as listed here, for tree sizes from nine to fifteen inches, all the way up to greater than thirty-six inches. With two options of the providing, whereas the contract is not to exceed forty thousand, from low, to, account number, two, dash, zero, one, five, twelve, two hundred. And that has certified with chief financial officer, since certification, being attached to this resolution. Now, therefore, we resolve, that Board of Commissioners, township of Nuthley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract, which we will be awarded to Tucci's experts, I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
We resolve, that Board of Commissioners, township of Nuthley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, the township treasury, and she is hereby authorized to refund payments to recreation programs, in the amount supposed to be low. The addresses are twelve thirty-four, Raymond Avenue, for Kinder Gym, in the amount of fifty dollars, for the year twenty twenty-two. One oh seven, Kirsten, for Kinder Tots, in the amount of fifty dollars, for twenty twenty-two. And eighty-one, Center Street, apartment four, for Kinder Gym, in the amount of fifty dollars, for the year twenty twenty-two, I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thanks.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Pelley.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. That concludes our business meeting. I'm now opening it up to the public.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding a community concern should state your name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed with the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Seeing, seeing no one from the public, uh, wishing, wishing to comment this evening, um, I believe, we need to entertain, and a motion to go into retrospective session, if I correct, Mr. Chantel Pepper? That's correct, it's the man of contract negotiations. For contract negotiations, will you? Second.
Whereas, section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, public law nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the public for meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas, the public, the public body is of the opinion that such, such circumstances exist. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners of the township of Nuthley, and the county of Essex, and state of New Jersey, desires to pursue.